Good evening and please can I welcome everyone to the Meeting of Scrutiny Committee on Monday, the 8th of September 25. We're from the Walton Suite. Time is 6:30 and my name is councillor Caroline Brook and I am chairperson of this committee. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the council's YouTube channel and also available for viewing later. Please ensure your mobile phones are switched off or on silent and in the event of an emergency or need to evacuate, the fire alarm will sound and please follow all instructions from the team and the fire exits clearly marked. I'd like to welcome members of the public and visiting councillors this evening. You may have noticed that item seven, the general fund outturn contains an exempt appendix. If members wish to discuss any of that exempt appendix, then the public present will be asked to leave the meeting during the discussion. When we finish the exempt paper, members of the public are welcome to come back into the open session if you wish to rejoin, but understand if you don't. So turning to the agenda, item one, apologies and deputy members. Matthew.
Big and chair members, no apologies, chair, thank you.
Thank you. Item two, declarations of interest, any declarations of interest? Councillor Wallace.
I need to declare that I have a disclosable pecuniary interest in respect to the items on the agenda due to my additional role as a Hampshire County councillor. However, as there is no material conflict of interest regarding these items, I have a dispensation granted by the Audit and Governance Committee that enables me to speak and vote on these matters.
Thank you. All right, oh, councillor Pet.
Thank you, Chair. Without repeating the exact words of councillor Wallace, I have a similar declaration regarding my membership of South Town National Barg Authority.
Thank you. Any other declarations? Oh, no, councillor Pathet.
Thank you, Chair. A declaration of interest in terms of being a director of Event Limited, I think councillor Pet might have the same declaration.
Is it those of that ones?
Thank you. Our numbers of declarations are increasing. Okay, item three, chairperson's announcements. So the only one I would like to acknowledge is we've had an email from a member of the public regarding Corner House. We had discussions on this at the previous two meetings, the communications have been sent round. I'm certainly satisfied with those, I've consulted councillor Wallace who also is, and the member of the public is not here this evening. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we have seen that, we've discussed it and that we are content that those actions are closed off. Okay, moving on to item four, minutes of the meeting of the 5th of June 2025. Can the minutes of the meeting be agreed and signed as correct record, please? Thank you. Right, moving on to item five, public participation. Councillor Lee, I can't see because you're hiding. I believe you're registered to speak on all of the items. Do you wish to speak on all of them still? Okay, and would you like to speak on those at the time? Or, yeah, okay, wonderful. So item six, housing revenue account outturn 2024, pages 13 to 36. It's recommended that we scrutinise and comment on the proposals within the attached draft Cabinet report, cab 3516, which is to be considered by Cabinet's meeting on the 10th of September. I believe councillor Reach is going to introduce this to us and Mrs Keys, therefore support and able additional information. So if you'd like to come forwards, thanks councillor Reach.
Thank you, Chair. So the paper that you have before you, as you said, I will be discussing later this week at Cabinet and relates to the financial performance of the housing revenue account and the capital programme in 2425. It'll be requesting approval for revised budget forecast of the 2526 HRA capital programme to reflect slippage, as is set out on the cover of the paper. And the details are contained within the paper, the reasons for that. The figures are there on page 15 of the agenda pack as well and I'm happy to take any questions. The recommendations as of 16 as well, what will be taken to Cabinet. I can happily rattle through or can take questions from members. It's quite a complex and technical paper with lots of bits and pieces and moving parts and I look to Chair for, which he'd prefer me to do.
I think we're happy to dive straight in unless, Mrs Keys, is there anything else you wanted to add as an intro? Okay, wonderful, thank you. Okay, so if you come up to the main body of the report before we get on to the appendices up to page 29, councillor Wallace.
I had a general opening question. Obviously, we're moving towards LGR, local government reorganisation. We've got some idea of what local authorities we might be working with going forward. Can you, just to give us a bit of context in this, can you tell us what other local authorities have HRAs? Are there any local authorities that we're joining with that have HRAs? I know some don't, but it'd be useful to understand, I think, and help us to put it all into context going forward. Thank you.
So there are all manner of possible combinations of local authorities that will arise. We're very lucky in that the strategic director has some experience elsewhere and we have a very close relationship, particularly with Test Valley. So we work very closely with Test Valley. And Simon, if you're happy just to comment on some of the other adjacent authorities as well, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The only authority in any of the options that we're part of, which has a housing revenue account, is New Forest History Council, the others don't, they've already transferred the housing stock to Rishley's to provide us.
Councillor Power.
Thank you, Chairman. I have three questions, but they're all short ones, so unless you interrupt me, I shall take them all at once. On page 24, 10.3 refers to the Chuzzle Lodge catering provision being run at a substantial subsidy. Have we achieved forecast recovery on that with the next budget or are we moving towards it over a period of time? On page, that's page 23c, I beg your pardon, I gave you the wrong page number. On page 24, there's a reference to the £300,000 received from the sale of nutrient credits, which has been set aside to fund appropriate capital expenditure. There's something weasely worded about appropriate. I'd like it to be confirmed, please, that that will be applied to upgrading wastewater treatment plants elsewhere. And on page 26, there's a reference to at 10.5.e about sewage treatment works. Is there a possibility of using push funding to actually move forward the upgrade of wastewater treatment plants more quickly? Thank you.
So on your first question councillor Power, around Chuzzle Lodge, we're going to have to do, we're going to look closely at Chuzzle Lodge. We knew it was, there was a risk that the day centre was going to be closed. I'm not sure that it will factor into our revised budget for next year, bearing in mind that this, of course, is retrospective. So I might have to take that question away unless officers have an answer on that. No, I'll take that one away. On the question around whether it's appropriate use of the funds, Mr Hendy.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I mean, we are spending just under £400,000 on improving sewage treatment works in the housing revenue account on plant that are unlikely to generate credits but will substantially reduce the running cost of that plant. So it's largely a financing issue, which I'm sure Liz can deal with, but in terms of the overall position of generating credits and now how they'll go back into the HRA, we can give you some confidence that they will be spent on others' plant. And the last question was on, oh, sorry.
Please carry on, on push funding, I know we had discussed it just before, but push funding for additional upgrades.
Yes, in terms of push funding, just to remind members, there's a sort of hierarchy of approach to sewage treatment works. In the first instance, we're spending £400,000 on plant where we generate credits, cash credits. Secondly, we are spending just under £400,000 on plant which don't generate credits but will substantially reduce the running cost and therefore the subsidy, the HRA is currently providing to the provision of those plant. And then the remaining plant, which is a large number of sewage treatment plants, those are the ones that we're looking for push to fund, there's over 10 of them at the moment. So in terms of bringing it forward more quickly, it's going to be coming forward at the same time, we're not going to delay the push funding, those other plants, whilst we're doing the work to the first two.
Sorry, I think I've missed a nuance there. Will the push funding be used concurrently with the ones that we are spending money on? Therefore, I can see my favourite site coming forward in the closely foreseeable future. You might want to come back to me on that one.
Does anybody else have, councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Chair. So it's sort of a general point that there's quite a lot of favourable movements and all that sort of thing, which means stuff's not getting done. And there's a lot of reasons in there that are varied, but there's also a bit of a theme of staffing issues and I just wanted to ask if you could, you know, sort of give us a bit more on that, if that is proving to be a bit of a problem at the moment and whether that's the root cause of a lot of this. And then the second part to it is that because a lot of this is also, I notice, re-profiled and if I understand the nuance of that correctly, that that means things are sort of being pushed forward to be done at a later date. There is a hint in some of the performance reports later that that is causing to clog things up in the future because you're trying to get stuff done that needs to be done before you can move on to 2526 projects. And I wonder whether, what your view was in terms of how much this is all clogging, you know, he's going to start clogging things up in the future. I realise we've got LGR sort of out there as well, but just wanted to get your take on that impression that I was getting from, sort of the global impression from reading the report. Thank you.
Thanks councillor. So, yeah, there are, as you say, quite a few favourable things. On the revenue side, there is about half a million pound favourable on staffing arising from vacancies and various things, I'll talk about that in a sec. And that in turn, as you say, leads to about a million and a half on the capital side of the capital which has been re-profiled or will be in future years. There's a couple of things going on, during this period, and again, remember this is retrospective, we had a restructure of the team. I'll look to officers to give a bit more detail if we can, although bear in mind there was obviously some HR sensitivities there. And then I think the other thing, of course, of social housing regulator, and we have the results, which I think we're all aware of, of their assessment of our performance. So we've had a course correct in the previous year. So that, taking those two things together, then yes, we have, there are some things which have slipped to the right. There are other things outside of the control which aren't driven by staffing, such as King's Barton acquisition, which is pushed into the next financial year as well, and some other big moving parts around inflation and related interest, and then interest on cash that hasn't been spent. So there's an awful lot that compounds in here as well. So I think taking those two things together, the restructure of the team, having to do a bit of a course correction because of the findings of the social housing regulator has meant that there was a period when we weren't delivering quite as we were expecting in the year. I don't think this is now a bottleneck, I think the team is now resourced up and I think we will find that next year's budgeting won't be quite as, well, will be more accurate. And there are some comments in the report about where we've specifically tried to be more accurate on budget setting. It shouldn't. There are certain things, macroeconomic factors such as inflation, which was high early on and has softened a bit towards the end. So we've seen some upside in energy costs, where there's communal energy costs. But then things like the interest rate from the PWLB is over 5%, whereas we were budgeting five, so we are still slightly finger in the air because of those wider and macroeconomic effects, all of which, some of which I should say, do compound because of the way, how complex this is. But I think specifically, if you want additional detail on staffing, the chief executive or Mr Hendy for, Chair's happy he'll pass on.
Do we feel we need that? I mean, we've noted that that's perhaps impacted things. Do we need any detail here with the staffing? I don't think it's necessary. And do we have any other questions on the substantive paper, councillor Wallace?
Well, I've a couple of questions, but I'll do the first one. Just following on from that, I think paragraph 2.3, it says, we're only moving forward 3.4 million, but there was slippage of 9.4 million in 9.8 million, I think identified in paragraph 2.2. So I'm just, it might just be because of the number, the way the numbers work out, but I was, it looked like we're only moving forward part of what's slipped. You explain, yeah.
So I think I'll look to Liz in a second, but I think there was a, there was a re-forecast in February of last year, which was slightly lower. So I think part of that was because of the timing. Liz, have you got any further comments? Or Simon?
Yes, I think the 3.382 million refers to the deposit in relation to King's Barton. We're now, report, we're now actually exchanged contracts on that last week. So I imagine that's what that refers to. I have to go, I think in the report it does deal with that. The rest of the underspend in the year is on work that in effect will be taking place now. It's not, it's just re-profiled work in total, so it's not specifically slippage out of that nine million pounds. As it actually makes reference to that in 2.2, the paragraph above, doesn't it? Yeah.
Some points.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that makes sense, I think, just wording. The other bit I was, wanted to ask about was on paragraph 6.3, which is the environmental considerations. We have a goal to get 100% of housing stock to EPCC by 2030. At the end of, the report says at the end of 2024, 25, 64% of stock is at that level, energy efficiency level. So it begs a few questions, and what was the level at the end of 2023, 24? Are we on track to reach 100% by 2030? What more can we do to mitigate the risk of missing the target? So it's all around, how do we, how are we doing and are we on track and what can we do more better?
So as it stands, we're on track. I think it's fair to say that we've gone for the low hanging fruit, as you would expect, as we get towards the more difficult end of the housing stock, some of the, particularly the Swedish cottages, which are mentioned in this as well, and other more difficult properties, it will become harder. We've got the retrofit programme, which will retrofit over 630 properties coming very soon. That will help and that will, that will improve our performance there as well. But, you know, we don't really have much choice in this, we've got to hit the target by 2030. So as it stands, it's on track, but it's something that happily keep monitoring and it was reported through the performance report as well, I think. Simon, any further comments to that?
No, the only thing I would add, as councillor Reach has said, we have the programme £45 million to 2030 and we programmed against that. The only thing to add is the government's currently consulting on the social housing regulations in relation to achieving EPCC by 2030. The issue is there are some homes where the amount of money required to achieve EPC is purely, is just uneconomic and the government's recognised that and we've recognised that at some instances as well. Therefore, it's going to require a different approach to achieve that, but that's not to say that our ambition is not to do that and we're finding more creative ways to do it. Witnessed the report last time around in terms of installation of solar panels and batteries.
So for that, is, I presume you've got some kind of chart which says, you know, where we're meant to be at at different times on, and perhaps this falls more into the performance report, actually, but I, I'm pretty sure, I think that, well, touching press, I'll touch you on it again in the performance report, but I don't, I don't, I think that the figures haven't moved at all in a year. So if I'm looking, perhaps I'll hold it to the performance report, it's really a performance report issue on the finance one, so perhaps we can pick it up again there. Thank you.
Just for completeness, it's on page 105 in the performance report and yes, of course, we can talk about that.
Question from me, 7.14, you've talked about applying for the local authority housing fund and it's had proposed profiling has been adjusted to reflect decisions made as at July 2025. Wondered if there's any update on that being as we're now in September, how confident we are and if it's not concluded, when will it be?
As it's hot off the press, I'm just looking to officer supporter.
Sorry, Chair, I don't know, I don't think we have been successful on round three, but I'll find out and come back to you in a second.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton, sorry.
I wonder if you could just tell me the Swedish cottage contract, it says that you've got procurement problems with it. Can you just explain the nature of them? I'm just curious to understand what's going on. Thanks.
So the Swedish cottages are, I would love to know why we are, that Swedish appendage, I'm sure someone will know, but there were cottages built some time ago following the war, I think. I'm sure there's some in your ward, councillor. They're not built to a particularly good standard, but for the most part, the residents of them quite like them. They have nice, large gardens and they're quite comfortable homes. They're very drafty, they're very, very difficult to insulate, they're very, very difficult to retrofit, but they're people's homes and they like them a great deal. The original contract, I believe there were issues with the contractor who tended for it, perhaps underestimating the difficulty and the complexity of doing that work. So there's a whole, I'm not sure how sensitive some of this is, there's a whole process we went through to make sure that the houses were watertight because the contractor, I think, bit off more than they can chew perhaps. So the re-tendering, I believe, has now been done and with a more realistic approach. Again, you know, referring to councillor Wallace's comment before there and Mr Hendy's comments, there are some houses which are going to be extremely difficult to get to EPCC, Swedish cottages are by their very nature, very, very difficult to do.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions on the main body of the report? No, appendix one. Appendix two. Appendix three. Four, five, six or seven? Take those all at once? No? Okay, do we have any debates on this paper? No. Councillor Reach, it seems like your job here is done. Thank you for the discussions and your questions and thank you for answering and being knowledgeable. And we'll move on to our next item. Thank you. So coming on to item seven, the general fund outturn report 2425 on pages 37 to 72 of your report. The recommendation is that we scrutinise again, cab 3514, which is to be considered at Cabinet again on the 10th of September. Councillor Cutler, I believe you're going to intro again, Mrs Keys, you're in the spotlight for support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The finance team have once again done a magnificent job in producing the statement of accounts on time by the deadline and that can be found on the website. This general fund outturn and capital programme outturn report is in effect a summary of that statement of accounts made easier to read, I think. Report details the variances from budget across service areas and show that a positive outturn of 2.4 million has allowed a transfer of just over 1.7 million to reserves and 0.7 million to the general fund reserve. As is usual with these transfers, along with additional funding in year, necessitates the revision of the capital programme, including new budgets. The report also seeks to approve or to write off five uncollectible non-domestic rates debts, which is detailed in the exempt appendix. So the report shows our continued effective custodianship of the council's finances, so I'm happy to take questions and Mrs Keys will no doubt deal with the more difficult questions.
I'm just interjecting, thank you, Mrs Melish, for coming along. Thank you for coming to see us this evening. Sorry. Continue, Mrs Keys, was there anything you wanted to add? No? Thank you, sorry to interrupt, I was just aware she was going and I'd forgotten to monitor. Right, so do we have any questions on substantive part of the report going up from page 37 to 59? Councillor Power.
Thank you, Chairman, just one on page 42. As long as I've been a councillor, there has been mooted a multi-year settlement. I would like an opinion on whether the odds on getting that are shortening or lengthening. Thank you.
Believe we're assured that we will get a multi-year settlement this year, but until it happens, we won't hold our breath.
Any other questions on the councillor Bolton?
Point 13 on page 44, there's some talk of pushing some original budget into reserves. Does that mean that they have to be specifically used for the same purpose or is that, are they able to be sort of poured into a general reserve? And then secondly, I'd understood from officers that the prosperity fund was not going to be available going forward and that was the last sort of available application a couple of months back now. But this might be indicating that there's a bit of money that may well be used for another round later on, possibly this year or next year. And I wondered if you could clear those bits off. Thank you.
Certainly, there are, sometimes we have grants that come in during the year which are unbudgeted for, which are also un-ring fenced, in which case they would go into general reserves, but the ones that are listed out in paragraph 13.1 are ring fenced for those specific purposes. There are spending plans against those, but they weren't completely spent by the end of the financial year, so they're carried over to use that funding for the spend as it's incurred in the new financial year. Thank you. Councillor Pet.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick one, looking at 132F, the car parking receipt shows a healthy favourable variance. Should I infer that we underestimated the success of our revised parking strategy a year or so back?
Yes, I mean, I think we each year review our baseline budgets on parking. I think for the last couple of years, we've been above the budgeted figure and we will review where we are again as we go into the budget process this year. But yes, I think it proves that we continue to attract visitors and have the resultant car parking income.
Councillor Wallace.
Paragraph 18, these non-domestic rates that we're writing off, can I just confirm how does this compare to? The explanation made sense, but I just wanted to understand how does this compare to perhaps other councillors, other councils that we, you know, comparable with us?
We have a really good record at Winchester of collecting both council tax and business rates, so these debts that we're putting forward for write-off are not unusual and they're only in cases of insolvency action. So this is not an indicator that we are suffering any more than other councils are. Councillor Bolton?
Just one more question was, I noticed in 16.2 that we get an asylum dispersal grant and I wondered if you could explain to me what that is used for in a bit more detail and whether that does mean that we have an allocation or something, I just don't know in terms of illegal migrants, that sort of thing from central government. I don't know how that works and it just sparked an interest in my mind as to what that was for and how we use it.
As I understand it, it is when asylum has been granted, we then take on some responsibility for homelessness, if that's the case, but not before the granting of asylum. So it's any asylum. the granting of asylum. So any asylum seekers, be they illegal or legal, are responsible to the Home Office. It's only after asylum is granted that we we have a responsibility if those people present as homeless. But I think asylum probably has got more detail on what that specific grant is for. That's it, I'm not sure. I was busy Googling as you said that. No, I'm afraid I haven't got the detail on that at the moment. I do think we do get some grant funding provided by Hampshire County Council that has the social care responsibilities for those households. If they haven't got a leave to remain, I think that's what that grant refers to. But again, I think it's best if we come back and confirm that writing.
Chair, if I may, a paper on support is coming to one of the policy committees, so I'm sure the matter could be explored there.
Thank you, Nora. Any other questions on substantive paper before we come on to the appendices? No. Okay. So we'll come on to lost my notes. Appendix one. General fund summary out turn. Any questions? Appendix two, reserves, councillor Power.
Thank you, Chairman. We have thirteen point four million of SIL money sitting there. I believe some has been allocated to projects but not necessarily spent as yet. How can we get more done sooner? And when do we lose decision-making responsibility in the face of local government reorganisation, please? Thank you.
That's a difficult question for me to answer. But, I mean, there's there's still money coming in and there's still money going out and we are, we do have substantial reserve. There is a substantial amount allocated. And sometimes we get quite a bit of slippage with SIL. I do think it is one of those things we need to urgently address between now and and twenty twenty eight, but I'm assuming that all SIL funding will transfer to a new authority. One of our problems has been getting Hampshire County Council to agree schemes on some areas of things and that slows the process as well. But it's something that we can discuss further with the cabinet member responsible and come back to you with some more answers.
councillor Porter, I believe you wanted to interject.
Thank you and thank you for the question. SIL is a an income that comes in every year, as you know, and we endeavour to spend it appropriately for the three areas that we want to do. One is community, one is transport and one is other major projects. We have been, at the beginning, we gave money and expected people to have spent the money and after a period of time, we realised that we had to set a time limit for those people to spend that money to make sure that it was spent. And we also now have, as the days of LGR are coming to fruition, starting to give us specific timetables for specific grants that are being given. In September to December, it'll be our first time we'll ever apply, get people to apply online. So they will be applying from the whole district online. And that is, the aim of that is to speed up that conversation as well with the aim of giving that money out in the early new year. But everybody has to be given a period of time to spend SIL because in many cases Hampshire County Council are doing the work and as councillor Cutler just explained, sometimes you think the work's going to be done, but it doesn't get done as quickly as we'd like. And we do also recall SIL if it hasn't been spent after a period of time. So we endeavour to get as much of it spent as we possibly can before the local government reorganisation happens.
Thank you very much, councillor Porter. I feel this is an awful lot of money that we are holding and our plans to get it spent on community, the purpose of the SIL funding have been not through our own fault, not been spent as we would wish, whether it's held by Hampshire County Council or by us. I feel we need to be a bit more proactive in this and I realise there are resource implications to that. But I think thirteen point four million justifies a bit of resource in moving it forward. Could I ask whether that's going to be reviewed at which policy committee, which cabinet, how it's going to be, how it's going to get some welly behind it?
In fact, to cabinet this week comes an up-to-date paper. That number, that amount has significantly reduced. And we also are, I can, I actually challenged that comment about not being done. We give money out to parishes and to other community organisations who are very good spenders of that money. And we make sure that those plans are very much in process before we give them the money so that they do spend it quickly. You'll see, I haven't got the figures directly in front of me here, but on the cabinet paper for Wednesday, it gives you the current position and it's far less than thirteen point four million. And also we have to be conscious of how much money comes in every year and this year it's been slightly less.
Thank you. I'll come to you one second councillor Pet. I just wanted to add on to that though, to support councillor Power's saying, it has increased significantly through years, even if we've had less income on that. And we certainly aren't spending as fast as we are gaining SIL. And it feels that for many years it's been put on hold for spending on the central Winchester region, the whole ring fenced amount. So I do agree with councillor Power that perhaps it should come to a committee to try and how can we encourage spending, how can we encourage, because we've discussed this many times, encourage people to apply for the grants or to come up with the schemes or and I know you discussed you'd prefer some bigger schemes rather than the little piecemeal, you know, perhaps they pair together. So maybe it is worth a discussion or a member discussion or some such.
I welcome that, but I can assure you that all the parishes know exactly how to apply. And that's put out to all the parishes in the same way. And many people do choose to, and we've been having discussions with the South South National Park about perhaps doing joint applications because in many cases they're dependent, as you know, we have a ribbon of villages along the way. In Winchester, we have already allocated some money, the last time we allocated SIL, of four point five million to central Winchester. But we have other, many other projects where we've offered a large amount of money too. One thing she just said was that we are slow to spend it or slow to make or advertise it. We do encourage councillors to encourage their own parishes to do that and the town forum to do so too.
councillor Power.
Related one, Chairman, thank you. Could I just check that the considerable interest that has been earned on these funds are actually added to the SIL funds or whether they drop into the general fund? Thank you.
They are, they are.
That's a question for Mrs Keys.
Interest goes into the SIL fund.
I don't know in sure, I'm not sure to be able to say this evening. I can look that up.
Certainly the SIL charges are index linked. And I thought the SIL fund was sitting, well, we can check that.
Thank you. councillor Pet.
I was just going to raise a similar point to that. I can make the observation that certainly for the National Park Authority, which has a similar problem with the spending of SIL funding. It has, the point has been made there that the interest from it is going into revenue account unlike interest on S106s, which is ring fenced.
Because actually I think that's quite important. And should it be, I guess is the question, or is it entirely our choice? So while we're looking at where it does go, is it our choice as to where it goes or or is there a, it must go here?
Just coming back on that, with the park authority, some of the I mean, obviously it's the bigger projects slowing up that cause the backlog in the system. And some of the bigger projects with the park authority are being, or are supposed to be, being delivered by the county councils in Hampshire. Certainly is one of the slower authorities to actually spend the money and spend large chunks of it as well.
Thank you.
Which is why we're time limiting many of those and seeking to get the money back if it doesn't deliver. So it can be used for other projects.
Chair, if I may, I can answer the question now on the interest on SIL. It goes into the general fund, there's no requirement for us to add it to the SIL pot.
So that's our choice.
On some of the section one oh six contributions that we receive, there is a requirement within the agreement that we add interest to that pot and we do so accordingly. That's not the case in all of them. And with SIL, there's no requirement for us to do that.
So actually from the SIL pot, we're making revenue on that. We're gaining our own, topping up our coffers on the end.
The council obviously invests that money and takes a risk on that money. But yes, the the interest on it is added to the general fund.
I apologise. I thought that was, I thought that was not the case.
That's okay. It just doesn't quite sit comfortably with me, but there we go. Yeah, councillor Power.
Chairman, thank you. Should we ask for that decision to be reviewed?
That's what councillor Wallace just said to me. Perhaps we should review why it goes there, how, whether that feels right and comfortable with us all and and make us all just feel a little uneasy. It doesn't feel entirely wrong, just feel a little uneasy, you know? I can see around the room, there's a whole uneasiness. So maybe we should, I'll make a note to review it.
Chair, if I could assist, I mean, certainly it's clearly a principle which is part of the budget-making process and perhaps we could ask councillor Cutler and the section one five one to bring that forward at that time.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Thanks for raising it. Right, any more questions on the reserves piece? Appendix Winchester Town Account Outturn, do we have any questions on this? General Fund Capital Expenditure twenty four twenty five outturn, any questions on that? No. Revised twenty five twenty six General Fund Capital Programme or Revised twenty five to thirty five General Fund Capital Programme. Coming on to appendix seven, this is the exempt one. Does anybody wish to discuss this and we're going to exempt? No? Okay, no exempt. Any debate on this paper that we'd like to feedback? Oh, good. Well, thank you. And I've taken a note of to review where the SIL interest goes. Whilst it will be reviewed with councillor Cutler, I would be really interested in hearing the outcome and the reasoning for it after that, if possible. Okay, so thank you for your question on that. Coming on to item eight, Q1 Finance and Performance Monitoring, pages seventy five to one hundred and twenty four of your agenda packs. Again, we are raising the deputy leader or relevant cabinet member, any issues arising from the information. This is paper cab three five one three and again is going to the tenth September cabinet meeting. Are there any items of significance to resolve or be drawn to the attention of cabinet? Again, councillor Cutler will intro with Simon Howson ably assisting. Was this the one you wanted to speak on? Sorry councillor Lee. Yes. So we'll have the intro and then councillor Lee, I'll call you forward.
Thank you, Chair. This is the first performance report of the twenty five twenty six financial year and focuses on the progress and achievements against the priorities of the new council plan, which was adopted at the beginning of the year and came into effect on the first of April. The report covers financial, performance and financial information relating to the period from first of April to the thirtieth of June. There's been one minor enhancement to the information provided in the report and this this is to include historical trends in the red, amber, green status of projects and performance reports to provide a better context. There are no other changes to the format. The format is much as I've reported to other scrutiny committee meetings with the introduction of the streamlined report last year. Some of the highlights of the report which you may be interested in are councillors named best district council nationally for tackling climate change. We put the building blocks in place, working closely with BIFRA to commence the rollout of food waste collection next month. We've started building the brand new sports pavilion at River Park and delivered a programme of green business support and also achieved gold accreditation from the Domestic Abuse Housing Alliance. Happy to take questions, as you say, Simon Howson is hiding away at the back there and ready to add to it. Add to my responses.
Did you want to add anything, Mr Howson? Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to divide this up into two sections. We'll go I know, yeah. Yeah, I know. So I'm going to divide this up into pages seventy five and a hundred and pages a hundred to a hundred and twenty four, rather than chunk it into smaller pieces. So just be prepared which side your question comes on, because I know when I spring it on people, they go. councillor Lee, would you like to come forward, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to continue to flag some gaps in our performance reporting and KPIs discussed in scrutiny cabinet earlier this year. With our positive financial variances and the emerging nature improvement plan and the new local plan, there's a timely opportunity, I believe, to close the greener faster gap for bed with better greening resilience and embodied carbon outcomes across housing, council assets and open spaces. And I proposed previously the introduction of an integrated estate assets greening and climate resilience KPI, covering pollinator-friendly planting, community biodiversity initiatives, not captured in the nature, the nature improvement plan and the water efficiency and climate adaptation performance at estate and asset level. And of course embodied carbon and energy reporting for retrofits and capital works aligned with the local plan policy CN eight, which is linked to the Royal Institute of Charter Surveyors Whole Life Carbon Standards. This would position, I believe, Winchester as an exemplar beyond operational carbon, set a strong local government reorganisation benchmark and avoid offshoring nature, climate harms via higher carbon energy and nature impacts from imported building materials. So can I perhaps ask for this committee to consider this as a significant item for cabinet attention from this committee, please, and I request your support in taking that forward. My second request is for this committee's consideration is to identify KPIs and measures in areas that need additional resource. As already been mentioned by councillor Bolton, there perhaps is a logjam of progress, given the inability for all sorts of reasons to spend and get value for money in the way that we hoped. And I believe with additional resources, they could be included in the quarter two twenty five twenty six funding from the positive outturns, so we can accelerate delivery of the council plan for residents, communities and the environment. And I have some suggestions. So if you look at page eighty, CNAP measurement, it talks about, I believe you could investigate robust methods to attribute carbon savings to specific actions and projects. This would underpin credible CNAP reporting and should be a priority to get smarter attributions. And then on the nature improvement plans, I would add ecosystem services, which has been discussed at some length in HEPC. And I believe a resource, resourcing a deeper dive on ecosystem services would benefit the strengthening of habitat and species recovery, climate resilience and greener faster and the local plan. And again, this hooks into page eighty of the performance report. And then on page seventy nine, small-scale solar on council assets, you could with the positive variances accelerate the outline, the outline business case. And the question I would ask is why isn't community energy in terms of a shared ownership approach being considered for approach being considered for residents who have a real stake and can access cheap energy when surplus to council use? It could also leverage additional funding. Why not? And then enforcement, we talked, as I said, Cabinet and scrutiny earlier this year about a promised enforcement KPI. I'll say anything more on that because I know we're going to be picking that up at item nine. And then on major regeneration, Bar and Depot, it's ragged red for the reasons stated. And obviously, a fallback plan might be required. And then the central Winchester regeneration depended on viability and delivery of the bus hub solution. And then there's the station approach, which is coming, which is perhaps a little behind the process for the other two. But I do wonder whether there's an overarching master plan programme needed to capture the synergies, reduce the silo risk and improve marketability, given what we have at the moment is a poor state of market. And, and hopefully, we can perhaps by doing that de-risk this for developers and let's get on and do this regeneration. And finally, on housing compliance improvement, I see it's ragged green, but is that really correct? As progress is dependent on workforce, contractor capacity, which I understand to be an issue. And then if you factor in repairs and maintenance, you get the same issue about recruitment gaps, et cetera. So maybe these positive variances, rather than going to reserves, could be attributed to trying to fix some of these issues so that we can go quicker and faster and get, get the work done. So my question to scrutiny is, I believe these are significant issues which this committee may wish to consider and discuss and suggest to Cabinet as part of your report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee, much appreciated. Before we go into questions from the committee, officers, would any of you like to respond to any of councillor Lee's things or are you happy that we pick them up as we go through? Councillor Cutler?
I suppose I'm, I'm a little bit concerned, to me, it doesn't make logical sense. We have pointed out that there have been delays due to resource implications, due to the lack of skills to certain extent on some of the retrofit side of things and, and some of the outturn has been down to those delays. It's not due to lack of funds, so I don't quite understand where councillor Lee is coming from to say, if we use those funds, we'll be able to do it. We haven't been able to, to in the first place. And, and so trying to add extra things doesn't quite seem to make sense. I think that would be my response to the broad thrust of what councillor Lee has, has said because we, it's not for the lack of trying. Let's put it from our, from our perspective to to, to, to spend the money that we budgeted for. The economic circumstances at the moment are such that it's difficult and to suggest that there are more things we could do strikes me as contradictory, I suppose.
Okay. I know councillor Lee mentioned KPIs and in particular with regard to climate regen. Mr. Tony, do you have anything you'd like to add on that?
Thank you, councillor Brooke. I mean, we're very early in the debate and I'm sure many other things will come up for you to consider in your recommendations, but if committee felt minded, they could put forward a recommendation to ask Cabinet to consider the development of an integrated KPI for the climate matters set out. And Cabinet could respond to that when they consider the report at Cabinet. And, and the similar, Chair, if I may, with regards to resourcing, I mean, councillor Lee made comments around additional resourcing for climate initiatives, regen activity, housing compliance again. You could list that if you wished, however, being cognizant of councillor Cutler's comments. And indeed Cabinet could consider that when they look at the quarter one report and respond accordingly. And that consideration at Cabinet would bring those matters to a close.
Councillor Cutler, your thoughts?
No, I have nothing to add. I mean, it's, it's down to this committee to make recommendations to Cabinet and if, if you do, we will consider them.
Then we shall recommend exactly that, thank you.
Thank you, just to be clear, although I said the matter to a close, that was clearly will Cabinet make their determination. If there was further work to address following that determination, then officers would indicate the timescale for that work. Thank you.
Thank you, much appreciated. Okay. Committee coming into the report, councillor Wallace is going to kick us off, so a question on items between page seventy five and hundred, please.
All right, thank you. Recently, we had a deep dive into the KPIs and at the KPI meeting, we, it was agreed that the basis for the annual KPI targets would be included with the first quarterly performance report to provide clarity on how the goals were set. I couldn't find that in the first quarterly report. Can you please answer? Thank you.
I think I was officer in the room at that point. I, I can definitely see we've done some of them. You've, for instance, asked for a timeline update on the project briefs. If we've missed that, then we will pick that up.
Chair, that, that work has, has largely been completed. There's a few minor points to be finished and we can, we can certainly bring that back to you, to the next meeting or separately. You're, you're absolutely right.
So it's not in this report, but it will be going forward, is that right?
That's right, yes.
Okay, thank. I have a follow up one. Can I ask you particularly to look at, say, on the, on the monitoring, the green progress on the KPIs there? We do actually have some values in there, but I, I was confused by them. In the November Carbon Neutrality Open Forum, Winchester set targets of seventy one tonnes of CO two equivalent for scope one and two emissions in twenty twenty four twenty five and two thousand one hundred and ninety seven tonnes of T, tonnes of CO two equivalent for scope three emissions, on page eighty five, sorry, if that might help. And I don't expect you to, to do the numbers just now, but we quoted numbers in our Carbon Neutrality Open Forum about how the numbers we were going to hit in twenty twenty four twenty five and we appear to have a completely different number in this report. So that happens, changes happen, I get that, but I would expect some explanation as to why the numbers have changed. Similarly, on the GF two numbers, the data is consistent, inconsistent with the data presented at the forum and also with last quarter's numbers. And again, this is, this is a kind of recurring pattern that we've seen, that the numbers aren't consistent from one quarter to the next, even historic numbers. And there's no explanation given as to why. And so hopefully that, if you could include that in your update, that would be good. Thank you. Unless you can answer it now, of course.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton?
Just had a quick question on one of mine and Gerry's favourite topics, fly tipping. I, I'm surprised that the number of cleared fly tips is down so dramatically and yet the clear up rate isn't so good and it's claimed that it's because they're so dispersed. It feels like there's something more going on there and I wondered if you could explain that. Thank you.
Councillor Cutler?
Sorry, I was disappointed to see that they had, had dropped. There was an explanation there. It does become a problem, of course, as the numbers reduce and we're spread over a bigger area in terms of resource and the, the cost of collection, but I don't think that's an acceptable explanation. And so let's see how it, how it is looking for the, the next quarter and, and, and I will, I will follow that up.
I'll make a note of that, councillor Cutter. Okay, thank you, thank you councillor Bolton for raising it. Councillor Power?
Thank you, chairman. On page eighty three, there's a reference to the SDMP monitoring charge of forty thousand. A question as to whether this was included in the initial viability assessment and whether the situation has moved on recently. Thank you.
Councillor Cutter again? Microphone again, please.
I think Mr. Hendy's got the answer.
Exactly, I'm sorry, I'm struggling to find the page, that relation to Gooden's site.
Beg your pardon, it's page eighty three. It is a Goodon's site, yes.
So we, it is, it was included in the original viability and we have paid it now because we started selling credits.
Thank you, councillor Amy.
On page ninety, we've got Winchester Sports and Leisure total figures and you've got a target figure of fourteen hundred and fifty five thousand for visitors. That is an increase on what the original business plan forecast. So how much additional money do we get back from the sports centre on that sort of performance?
Miss Key?
I don't have, apologies, I don't have the figures with me, but I can just assure committee that the management fee for that contract is calculated in accordance with the, with the contract as it was when we, when we signed up with the operator. So it, it's calculated in accordance with that.
Thank you. Councillor Bartholomew?
Thank you, Chair. On page seventy eight, there's reference to the annual staff travel survey and there are two hundred and twenty one respondents. Just wondered if there's any feedback on the progress with the staff travel and how that's how that's happened, sort of where there's been improvements this year. Thank you.
Is that councillor Cutter one, please?
I think there might be a chief executive one.
Forgive me, I just need the page again, please.
Launched and collated data from the annual staff tra, travel survey, which, which is fed into the carbon footprint data. I think that's really what it's for.
And, and forgive me councillor, your, your question is how are we improving that or is that an improvement from last year? You're looking for a little more detail on the
That's right, yes.
On the changing trend.
Yes, thank you.
We can, we can certainly get that for you councillor, I don't have that to hand, but we do have an annual survey and it asks how staff travel to work, whether they car share, whether they cycle, whether they walk and what could we do to increase the use of more sustainable travel methods than travel in a solo car? Bearing in mind, of course, that some colleagues do have to go out on the patch to work, so therefore need a car at short notice, but we can certainly pull a small piece together and perhaps pop that in the DSU for members' interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions on the first section? Councillor Bolton, then councillor, then councillor Wallace?
I wonder if someone could share with me the details of the heat scheme? I had a look on the website, I couldn't find anything on there about the staff heat scheme, but I'm curious to know how that works and how you get cheaper energy bills and if you do, can we all have a bit?
Sorry, what page is that?
So I see so, councillor Bolton, we'll find out about that one.
Councillor Peck?
Thank you, Chair. Can I link together comments on page ninety three, which is Central Winchester Regeneration? Ninety five, which is station approach and ninety six, which is the movement strategy? I noticed at the bottom of page ninety three, one of the actions for the next quarter was going to be to undertake a bus hub option study to assist in the regeneration of CD where you are and the longer term bus strategy for the city. I would like us to, to nudge the cabinets to take perhaps a little more joined up approach with the station approach work and indeed the movement strategy to ensure that we're looking at a bus strategy for the whole city moving forward, not just a bus hub, a bus hub rather down here, but how we can have in effect two bus hubs because we need people to get to the high street, we need people to, to make the, the interchange at the station as well. And we've not yet made that explicit. And I note in the movement strategy, that's, that's amber for timeline, red for budget as it has been for some time and understandably so. But we've just been talking about SIL earlier on and it says funding for transport related schemes will now be via individual SIL applications. I, I wonder, this is ignorance on my behalf, whether, whether Hampshire can apply for Winchester SIL funds to assist in that. Hopefully, I'm getting a nod from my rights, I'll take that as yes. There is an opportunity here, I think, to make stronger linkages between those, those three things in the context of a better bus strategy for the city.
And just to be absolutely clear, the brief to officers is absolutely crystal clear and unambiguous that we are expecting a joined up approach. There is, I think, the number one thing we do need to do to unblock things, and I will be writing to the leader of Hampshire to try and resolve this, is there's a need to reboot the movement strategy, I think. And look at the priorities within it, look at the priorities within it, given what we know about the potential hard cutoff in terms of being able to easily spend money without needing approval of a, you know, shadow authority or whatever. And particularly bus interventions would be, for me at least, high on that list. But I can assure you that the point about this needing to be a joined up approach, not just looking at where you put interchanges, but also what changes need to be made to the streets and how that's reflected in Central Winchester, that is absolutely the priority. Brilliant, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wallace.
It's a good timing, councillor Todd has stepped forward. Should we be concerned that the leader is spreading himself too thin and the issues are being missed? Well, obviously, we know councillor Todd is a leader of Winchester's council, a Hampshire councillor, is a cabinet member for regeneration, is our representative on the Hampshire and Ireland White Local Government Association, on the local government association, the National Local Government Association, the Partnership of Southampton Joint Committee, South East England Council's representative and coordinator of response, the district's response to LGR, and I'm sure there are more. Plus, of course, he's the potential mayoral candidate for the Lib Dems. Potential, potential, potential. There are problems with the negotiations with referred bidder at Byron Depot, delays to submission of the DDP for the Central Winchester regeneration project, challenges establishing a way forward at the old River Park Leisure Centre, not, you know, to mention station approach. Other mayoral candidates have chosen to step down from their local authority roles. Is the leader considering this? Other mayoral candidates weren't given a lot of choice, is my understanding. I think, I think there's probably a bit more detailed work done by, needed doing by councillor Wallace to properly understand some of the projects that he just referred to. Maybe the challenge of being a councillor and being on the scrutiny committee is more than he can handle, I don't know. So for example, you touched on, you touched on what's happening with Central Winchester. We have a cabinet structure. I'm fortunate to have a very talented team around me. I'm fortunate to have an exceptional team of officers. I've delegated, you, you saw my recent announcement that, for example, in terms of the work on River Park, that it's been effectively delegated to a colleague to work on. We have agreed the DDP with, with, for, for Central Winchester. I'm surprised that somebody with your close attention to detail would have missed that. Maybe you need to ease off a bit to find the time to do your scrutiny role properly. In terms of, in terms of station approach, we're absolutely clear about our way forward. It's impacted by the, the change that is happening to the combined authority system. And it's impacted by the impact of what's happening with the consequences of local government reorganisation. I will be the first to admit that the workload that has been taken on not just by me, but also by our officers, by other leaders and other officers across the county on local government reorganisation has been immense. It's been a huge amount of work. It's come on top of the job of leading a council that all fifteen of us have taken on. We have moved from having meetings once a quarter, in some cases to meetings once a week. But the good news is that at the end of this month, we submit our applications. And at that point, I won't say we can all relax, but the actual work that we have taken on, which has been a huge amount of extra work, effectively drops away as far as the, as far as the councils are concerned, and moves over to the government to evaluate and assess our submissions. So, you know, I can't judge on the fact that people have chosen to put me in these particular roles and I'm grateful for those that have put their confidence in me. I have, I have, I believe that the team as a whole continues to deliver very effectively and will continue to do so. But I would also say I'm very much looking forward to the final submission of our local government reorganisation proposals and the chance for all of that to die back a bit.
One moment. So in summary councillor Todd, your answer to a yes no question, just summarising, was no, was it? Because I'm not entirely sure you answered the yes no question. The question was, is councillor Todd planning on standing down as other people have because of their mayoral candidacy?
There is, there is no selected candidate from any party who has stood down from the role that they are in.
So that's no.
So there only, as things currently stand, only one party has selected their candidate and that particular person continues in the role to which they were elected and chosen by their colleagues.
So the answer's no.
I think the answer's no, yeah.
Thank you. Right, councillor Wallace, do you want to give me that?
I wasn't trying to be offensive already with the question, but obviously our responsibility here on the scrutiny committee is to ensure that, you know, we're doing things right for our district. You are spread thin, you're doing a lot and we all acknowledge that. And we have got a, you know, we have gone red on the Byron Depot and that was particularly the thing that provoked the question. So.
And I'm glad you highlighted that. I'm not, I mean, I have many roles, but I'm not chief executive of the developer in question that has decided that strategically it no longer fits and is not the project that they wish to go ahead with. Again, we have a great team of officers, we have a very clear way forward in terms of resolving the particular situation that we have there. I'm absolutely confident that by the time we get to the next quarter, certainly by the time of the next quarterly report, I think probably either by the October or November cabinet, and we're working out the exact timing, we will come back to you with an absolute resolution of that. So fear not. And I would stress, I do welcome scrutiny. And if, you know, you get to the point where the term that's sometimes used in the, in the Liberal Democrats is that the men in grey sandals need to come and talk to me, then I'm sure I will listen to their words, but I don't believe we're at that point yet.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions from page seventy-five to a hundred? Right, so coming on to page one hundred to a hundred and twenty-four then, I'm going to go first this time. On page a hundred and seven, GH fourteen in the table, numbers of dampened mould open cases is red, number of outstanding high risk fire risk assessments is red. And I wondered if that's because it hasn't begun yet, was it supposed to have done? Are we acting on this to make it amber slash green? Because, I mean, particularly mould open cases certainly shouldn't be red. So I just wondered if there's a plan to address that, please.
Yes, thank you. The commentary below the table sets out the reasons for that. I agree with you, we absolutely have to get on top of mould and dampened mould, AWAB's laws be coming in very soon. And that will place even higher responsibilities on housing providers to make sure that homes are free of dampened mould. But I think what we're seeing there is, as explained in the commentary, relating to the small number of inspections in the period. There's a plea that colleagues can make, members can make, sorry, that I can make to members, which is to reassure residents that we're coming around not to spy on them or to goodness knows what. But it's actually to make sure that their houses are good and safe. I was pleased that we met the social housing regulator on our monthly basis on the fourth of September. And they were, they were pleased with the progress we're making, so they've asked instead of us meeting monthly, we're now going to two monthly. So that should give some reassurance that the regulator is happy that the progress is, is on target.
So it says two though, but it doesn't say two out of how many, or two was fifty percent or one hundred percent or. Are you able to just give us some indication on that, please?
Can't quite do the maths, but councillor Coleridge to my left is doing the arithmetic at the moment. I suspect it's probably about eleven. As, in fact, I will put money on it being eleven, eleven, yeah, eleven, two.
Oh, thank you. Right, questions? Councillor Wallace, then councillor Bolton?
I think this wants to come into councillor reach again, let's build on the kind of question we started earlier. So, so we're looking at the metrics on page one hundred and five. This is all about EPC, percentage of all Winchester council homes achieving energy efficiency rating of C or above. First of all, there is a difference in the numbers presented here to the numbers presented in the previous paper. And we talked about sixty-four percent for the area in the previous paper. Here we're talking, we're saying that we're at seventy percent. So that's just a typo, I guess, that needs cleared up. But really, the, the main question is here, the trend that we're seeing in the percentage of Winchester council homes achieving energy efficiency rating of C or above is not a trend that's going to take us to a hundred percent by twenty thirty. It's gone up eight percent in five years. And we've got to go, the remaining thirty percent, which, as you mentioned earlier, is going to be, some of which is going to be very hard. We've got to do thirty percent in the next five years. So is that, you know, are we? Well, moreover, I mean, the numbers actually, so we made, we did know, we got no houses moving from EPC up to EPC, from a lower grade to EPC C last year, or it was less than one percent. So it's, it's, it's not, it's not, the numbers aren't looking good. So can you explain the numbers, what it is we're doing to improve it, where we're going, you know, if we had a, yeah, we can, give us more behind all this, please. Thank you.
So thanks for the question. As for why we've had a stop, I suspect, I will look to officers in a second, I suspect that's because we've refocused our attention on compliance. We've talked about dampened mould already. There are, we do have resource that will be used for doing other things. But we will, we've, I've already mentioned the six hundred and thirty-five, I've got the precise last digit of that, council homes that we will be putting through the next phase of our retrofit programme, purpose of which is to get that E P C C. So doing some more quick maths, so six hundred and thirty odd of the five and a half thousand we have, that's about twelve percentage points. I suspect that we should see this rise by, once that, once that project is complete. So that would take us up to somewhere around eighty something percent. And then subject to final decisions made by cabinet on the structure of the charging regime for that retrofit programme, we expect that there will be a further programme further down the line. Some of this is also subject to government funding and that would move on even further. I will go back and I will say what I said earlier, which is there are going to be some properties that are going to be extremely difficult to get E P C C. But I'm confident that through retrofit, we will get about another ten to twelve percentage points pretty quickly coming through. Mr Hendy, is there anything further to add?
Yes, Chair, I think the best, best way to answer that question is we provide a copy of the programme. We've got to, just, just to be clear, the, the remaining properties from now until twenty thirty is about thousand five hundred. Five years is three hundred a year and we've programmed more than that in the current year. There's six hundred and seventy programmes in the current year. So I would change the, the point being made on the trajectory, whether it's fit to achieve that overall target by twenty thirty. But I think the way to answer it in detail would be to provide you a copy of the programme, the work that's already programmed from now to twenty thirty.
Yes, that, that would be very helpful, thank you. Obviously, I'm just going off the numbers here. I mean, we've gone up eight percent in the last five years and we've got thirty percent to go. I'm great to hear that, from both of you, that we think we can get there. But it would be great to see a bit more detail behind that, so thank you for, thank you for offering that.
Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Chair. T C twenty-five, so it seems to be running out of steam a bit. Is there a way of reinvigorating this for the final sprint across the finish line? Thank you.
I think it's a bit unfair to say that it's running out of steam. We have had to refocus T C twenty-five on the basis of local government reorganisation. So some of the longer term investment plans in terms of digitisation is not appropriate to go forward with at the moment. That creates some problems with, with, with achieving our targets. Longer term, we are continuing with the, the, the necessary and easy to, relatively easy to achieve digital approach. But we've also had to refocus the, the whole process on looking at, at the transition to a new, new authority. And that's a key part now of that process. So we are undertaking a series of meetings this month. We've already had two with each service lead on a preparing for change, which is to review where they were, review the decisions taken at our first star chamber to see how much has been achieved for each area, what the reasons, if there are any, and in several cases, in our first two meetings, we've actually, they've, both areas have achieved more than their target. And so we're then looking, reviewing the areas that we discounted at the previous star chambers to see if, if they would be appropriate to revisit. And at the same time, we're talking about the work that needs to be done in the next two years to transition into a new authority and that has to be the priority at this point. So the outcome of those, those meetings, those, those preparing for change meetings will, will both feed into MTFS and a revised programme on T C twenty-five and, and that will come forward in the autumn. Mrs Keys may, may wish to add to that.
Thank you, Chair, thank you. And it is literally just to add that we've had a really successful programme of savings that have come through under T C twenty-five. We've achieved over half of the three million pound target that we set for ourselves. But as with many projects of a similar nature, the easier wins come at the beginning. And we always knew that the bigger transformation that was going to lead to the remainder of that was going to take longer. And we wanted to absolutely get those transformations and the digitalisation right, so we took our time in order to do that. And as councillor Cutler has said, we're now looking at those through the lens of LGR as well to ensure that we are LGR ready and we're ready to work with partners. So we wouldn't want to digitalise a service and invest in a particular way of doing things without ensuring that our partners to be, are on the same position as us. So just to reassure members really, that we always knew that the harder to reach savings at the end of this programme were going to take this long to achieve.
I just don't want to come back on my councillor Bolton.
So do I understand that to mean that the hundred percent of the saving is just not going to be achieved in the timeframe? So it is going to go beyond that?
If we say the timeframe is twenty twenty-five and we find ourselves in September twenty twenty-five, then yes, we are looking for it to be a longer term project than we initially thought, but no less deliverable.
Do you have any more questions on the second half of the paper? No. Okay, do we have any debate? No. Then thank you for your engagement. On this one, I've made notes of monitoring fly tipping situation. While we have the reduce in the numbers, the clean up isn't, isn't matching up. Getting the updated change in trends of staff travel to work. On page seventy-nine, the heat scheme, can we have more info? And provide the programme of work for achieving E P C C by twenty thirty. Was there anything I've missed?
No, Chair, I have all those as well. It's whether a committee want cabinet to consider an integrated KPI for climate change and whether they want cabinet to consider additions.
We do want to do that. Does everyone agree? We'd like to do that. I just haven't written it down because you'd written it and they were long sentences. Apologies, Laura's covered those off, I just didn't read them out. So those two points as well. Okay, thank you very much for your engagement on that. Okay, coming on to item nine. So the request was from councillor Laming for a work programme item drafted attached to the agenda. I fully support this. We've had a brief conversation about it to go to a task and finish group. Councillor Laming, if you'd like to introduce and explain the request, sorry, and then councillor Lee, yeah. Councillor Porter and Cheryl Hedin will be supporting the intro, councillor Porter. So councillor Laming, if you'd like to introduce this, perhaps some of the background without specific items mentioned would be useful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The reason I brought this is because, like most councillors, we receive an awful lot of complaints about the enforcement. This is particularly prevalent to parish councils and we need to actually haul it back so that people have got faith in the system, that it works. So therefore I've asked for a working party to look at how enforcement works, what are the good things we do and how can we improve on other things. And that's basically the crux of what we're looking at. And also comparing it to what other councils do and how they perform.
Thank you. Councillor Porter, did you want to feed into this already?
I may. I think that the aims of the paper are very clear and I'm really pleased that we are a listening and learning council. So this hopefully will bring some reassurance to councillors that Manchester City councillors are doing a good job on enforcement, as well as looking at how other people do enforcement, how other councils do enforcement, so that we can see if there are any significant differences, if anything, anything we wish to adopt or whether we think we're doing the right thing. The councillors and public want to know the current position on some enforcement issues. And it's important to update the public, but we can't divulge everything for many reasons, as many of you know. But it is important that we keep local ward councillors abreast of the position in those, those councils. So the communication part of this, I think, is really important. As well, we've got the, just come down here. So we've talked about benchmarking and communication, transparency and public access. I think it's important that our councillors also know how we've changed the arrangements slightly under the enforcement twenty twenty-five policy as a different flow chart now and to make people really conversant with that so that they understand it. I think parish councils do, but we need to keep working on that between us. I'm just going to say really, the council doesn't have an infinite budget to carry out enforcement and nor is it necessarily expedient to pursue every case. But it is definitely the principle that we need to make sure that we are clear about why we're enforcing the case if we want to make sure that we win it. And, and how we win it is important. And how we win it is important and how we get the right result for the public in the end. So.
You made my eye twitch when you said not all cases are expedient to pursue because that's the thing that we get more grief over than anything else. It's suddenly my case has gone to not expedient to pursue, what does that mean?
I think that's, that's an important part of why we need to look at this. And I really welcome the scrutiny because I think it's a, the conversation's been rumbling along for a long time. It's been really an opportunity to look at that and to make sure that we do have the transparency and improve public access to the outcomes as well.
Yeah, I think we all have some trauma response to that sentence. Councillor Lee. Councillor Lee, would you like to come forward?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I wanted to support the initiative and also to thank councillor Porter. It's been a difficult summer in the central Meion Valley, particularly in the Silverton Newtown area. And borrowing a phrase from NASA, it used to him, we have a problem. So how do we strengthen and speed up planning enforcement? So I've done my own bit of analysis and even written to MHCLG to try and see whether I could see if there's going to be a clear way forward. But the importance in maintaining public trust and confidence in the planning system is obviously manifest. And councillor Porter and the group leaders have discussed this at some length and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. But what do we know? We know that planning enforcement is true drawn out. It's causing community stress, it's harming the environment and damaging trust in this council. Enforcement powers under the Town and Country Planning Act are weak compared with, for example, the Environment Agency, which has stronger sanctions, clearer evidential standards and quicker action. Unfortunately, government does not have any plans to mend the planning enforcement system, currently evidenced by response to me only last week on the subject from MHCLG. So we have to find our own solutions. In my central Meion Valley ward, especially as I mentioned, Silverton and Newtown, residents are increasingly frustrated by perceived inaction or slow action. Parish councils and district councillors are often overwhelmed with questions. This is not our officers' professionalism, which I, at fault, which I thank them for. But it's about the system they are forced to work within, which perhaps needs more staff and better tools. So I produced a summary of some of the key issues and I know councillor Porter has heard some of these before. Cumbersome evidential standards and delays in evidence gathering. Limited or inconsistent police support for safe site visits. This slows process. More clarity is needed perhaps between the Winchester and the South Downs National Park enforcement roles. And of course, in my ward, seventy percent plus is in the national park. Winchester recently updated its enforcement plan with some priority criteria changes. I think that doesn't help. I think it allows harm and stress to environment and people to continue. I suggested some actions and some further thoughts, which I'll share. Enable use of drones for faster site validation. Rapid certification of drone footage and witness statements. Stronger, quicker use of breach of condition, temporary stop and planning contravention notices. And clearer agreements with police for speedy support to our offices for site visits. And the question I have is how many times have our enforcement teams' actions been delayed by lack of police support? Where higher security protection is needed for hostile sites? Winchester has rightly increased the enforcement budget by two hundred K, but I know there are recruitment issues. So I wonder whether our enforcement plans need another refresh as part of this task group, I don't know. And we've mentioned need for enforcement KPI and I'm sure this will help if we get that right. And do we need more enhanced training and better IT tools for our enforcement team? We know that even with better resources, weak laws are the limiting factor. Statute reform is urgently needed and I'm told by MHCLG that that is something that's coming down the line, but it's not here to help us. So I do believe this task group, it needs to deal with the current problem. Plus, second guess, I suggest, where necessary, the new legislation that is coming down the line. That is the planning infrastructure bill, DVO LGR outcomes and localism disempowerment. We must try and ensure that whatever we come up with stands the test of time and is future proofed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Lee. Councillor Porter, I don't know if you wanted to respond to any of that?
I would, please. I'd say that in all the conversations and letters that come from the chief planner and the government about planning, in every single case, there's one huge omission, which is enforcement. So that's one point I'd make. I'd support councillor Lee's comment that there is not really anything that is done to strengthen that over the period of years. And the other point I'd like to make is that I think our officers are very well trained. They're also very careful about their own personal safety, which I think is very, very important. And I'm sure that councillor Brooke, having had this portfolio before, is aware of that same problem. But also, the whole time it takes to get any case to court is incredibly long. I heard recently, only about a month ago, two months ago, we were told something like sixty eight weeks. So the process can take an incredible long time. And I think that our staff do a very good job on the number of cases that they can take if they have the appropriate tools to do so. And unfortunately, the legal tools at the moment are definitely not there.
Just a quick comment on that. Can we ask the leader perhaps to lobby the MP to take this forward? Because going into LGR, where the area that's covered is even larger, it feels very much like enforcement will get worse rather than better. And unless the government strengthens the rules around it, it's just going to get a bit lost in the ether. So it was just a thought.
I'm sure that I have the right number of staff to actually be looking at this. It won't be the same staff spread over three times the size or four times the size. So can I just reassure you that Manchester City Council has a good service and the unitary will have a good service too.
But we still don't have the laws to back us up. So we still need to lobby.
You're absolutely right, absolutely right. And also I think that this scrutiny could bring out some really useful work, which I appreciate greatly.
Thank you. Councillor Todd, yes or no?
No, I think that's a, I think that's a very sensible thing to do. I'm a bit worried about timing, but it is the committee stage of the planning and infrastructure bill. So if we're going to do it anywhere, it needs to happen now. I don't know who's, oh, it's in the Lords, okay. I'll certainly take the action. I'll ask our MPs, all three of them. Any help you can provide with one of them or two of them would be appreciated.
Well, the one or two you're referring to, one of them has a background in planning, so actually is probably our best call.
I think it might also be the opposition spokesperson on local government.
Although who their opposition to, we're not entirely clear at the moment.
I'll message her later.
Okay, so I think, I think a coordinated approach, I will certainly, I think some ideas on strengthening enforcement in the planning infrastructure bill would be very welcome. And I don't know if it's possible on the timetable or if there is a useful place to put them in, but I think it does make sense.
To date, in every, in every response we've made to every planning detail, we have mentioned enforcement as an issue. So I'm sure you will appreciate.
I do. Councillor Leamey, coming back to you. So you've got, you see, laid out in the response to your request. Are you happy with that format, that they're the topics that are going to be covered? Do you want to input any more into that?
I think it covers a large amount of what we want to look at. And I'm harmed by what councillor Porter and councillor Todd have said. Because it is something that needs to be addressed and we need to work on to ensure that heat residents get what they really deserve.
So coming to the rest of the committee, does anybody else have any input, any thoughts, any questions on this proposal? Councillor Pat?
Just one question, Chairman, thank you. We get different information formats at the moment from the SDMP cases and Winchester cases. The SDMP cases actually provide less information. Could you look at a commonality of presentation, please, when looking into this? Thank you.
Yep. Yes, good suggestion. Any other thoughts or important questions on this? Any debate on this? No. I was bound to be prompted on something I was just doing. So we need to see who would like to volunteer in the room to be part of this. We're looking at four or five members. Four, four, we agreed, four. So who would like to be a part of this? I'd suggest I am with my planning and enforcement background. Councillor Leamey, of course. So we're needing two others. Councillor Wallace, one more. Councillor Murphy? Okay, so that's our four, Mr Watson, is that okay? So you'll schedule times and dates for this. Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. And thank you for bringing that forward again. I think it's very important. And thank you for welcoming councillor Porter.
Chairman, would you like me to attend those meetings?
Definitely.
Good.
Okay, so thank you. I've made a note to lobby the MPs on that. And consistency of presentation between SD, NP and Winchester. Thank you. Thank you. Right. So item ten, to note the committee current work programme. Just to add on to that, that the chairs of the two policy committees and I have decided we're going to have a quarterly meeting. We've had two this municipal year. We're talking about the work programme regularly, how to ensure that it's put across the committees so that we cover all the items we want to cover and also the task and finish groups. So I just wanted to make a note of that at this point. So you're happy to note the work programme going forwards? And to note the latest forward plan, pages one hundred and thirty one to the one hundred and thirty eight. Noted, no thoughts, questions? Wonderful. That concludes our items of business this evening. Thank you for your engagement. I think we've had a successful meeting. Have a safe journey home.